Bauer.
Here.
Mayor Prochey Madre.
Here.
Alderman Jones.
Here.
Alderman Welch.
Here.
Alderman Green.
Here.
Alderman Rupertus. And Mayor, you have a ma- uh, for him.
All right, thank you. Alderman Welch, will you give your some pledge?
You gotta sing now. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, to Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. And now Chaplain Williams, will you please leave us in the indication? Not leave us, but... Provide an indication.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, however you pray or seek guidance or meditate, please join me in these words, please. Let us give thanks for the freedom, the security, peace that we enjoy as we meet together tonight. And as we seek guidance and wisdom for decisions and discussions that are made for the greater good of this commu- community, we pray for blessing, blessing on families that live here, on leaders that serve here, and on the state and in this nation where we live. May there be this night grace for peacemakers here and abroad. All over the world, may there be caution in matters of discord and may kindness transcend disruptions. Watch over those in need, give them comfort. Watch over those in authority and keep them safe and give them rest. Seeking these gifts, we ask with humble hearts, oh God, and all may say amen.
Thank you. All right, next we have a special presentation tonight. We have swearing and oath for our new police officer, Ezekiel Harrow.
Here at council tonight, we welcome a new officer to our family here in Jamaica Beach. I'll tell you a little something about Ezekiel Harrow was born to Romeo and Maria Harrow in January of nineteen ninety-eight in Santa Cruz, California. He is the youngest of five siblings. His family moved to Texas in two thousand and three, and he lived in Angleton for sixteen years until he moved to Freeport where he currently resides. Ezekiel graduated from Angleton High School in two thousand and seventeen and graduated from the Braschport College Police Academy in twenty twenty-three. His hobbies include fishing, gaming on his days off. Ezekiel enjoys spending his off time with his family and friends. Ezekiel was married to, and make sure I said two, for wife of three years' age. And they had two wonderful children, Anaya, who was four years old, and Escanor, Escanor, who is two months old. So that is a little something on Ezekiel. We're gonna go through the swearing in. We are excited to have him join the family. Look at me, raise your right hand, please. Good afternoon. Hi Ezekiel Harrow.
Hi Ezekiel Harrow.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of police officer.
Of police officer.
With Jamaica Beach Police.
With Jamaica Beach Police.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Of this state.
Of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome to the family. You can put that on, a baby, baby in arms, come on. I'll be there in case, I'll be there to catch you, in case. Congratulations.
Welcome, we look forward to seeing you.
Yes ma'am.
Just one second, can I have?
Oh yeah.
Can I give you a token of appreciation from the city of Jamaica?
Thank you ma'am, appreciate it.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you ma'am.
Okay, next we have, uh, public comments, uh, Mr. Jack Bertson. If you state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jack Bertson, one six five three zero, Tempe, Illinois, Jamaica Beach, Texas.
You already started.
Most of you know, uh, the process that I've been through the last two years, uh, trying to build a house here. And if you've ever been to the fair and seen one of those deals where the head pops up and they hit it with a hammer, well, that's kind of what I feel like, because every time I sit my head up, I get hit with that hammer, so. You know, I come to find out, we were building a house where there was a house. I assumed that there was a sewer cap, uh, there was a water meter there. I assumed that we had a water meter. And come to find out, uh, this weekend, uh, there is a sewer tap, uh, for forty-five hundred dollars, which forty-five hundred and fifty dollars, which was two months ago, three hundred and fifty dollars, I believe. And, and keep in mind, uh, I just recalled that we pulled our permit for our temporary long before that. But the bottom line is today I had to pay forty-five hundred and fifty dollars for a sewer cap installation. So whether there's an existing cap or not, we don't know, they've come out and looked for it, but the sewer is five foot deep. You know, they pushing with that rod, they're, you know, like looking for a needle in the haystack with a rod, because it's five foot deep probably. So, but anyway, I'm asking for the city council to relieve me of that forty-five hundred dollar fee, since in fact I did pull a permit for the temporary before the code or the, uh, ordinance was changed from three hundred and fifty dollars to forty-five hundred and fifty dollars. In, in talking to some other people in the, in the, there is a water cap there. You know, I always felt that, you know, it was the city's responsibility if they needed to change that to change it, but, you know, it's a twenty-five hundred dollar fee, I've already paid that. I'm okay with that, because I'll change it to a one inch cap. But I'm asking for some relief for the sewer cap. And again, I've already paid it, I'm just, might have consideration for it.
As you know, we can't make a decision, uh, because it's not on the agenda. And so, uh, Mr. Francis will, uh, progress it to council and, uh, potentially put it on the agenda for next time, and he'll keep you informed of, of the status of that. Okay, thank you for your comments. All right, next is Mr. Jerry Jackson.
Jerry Jackson, one six six one two, Curly. I have a question about inspections. I think we did, we hired a, an inspection person.
Inspector.
Per. Just, do they give a report or what's a report on the, like, the new construction? Do they like make inspections on the new construction and, uh, I guess the building permits? They go out and inspect that? Do we get a report on their activities?
So, we can provide you information on any, any, uh, inspection you can serve about.
The new, new construction and building permit, that they're not being inspected. I could be entirely wrong, but I feel that they're not being inspected.
Do you want me to apply for that?
Yes.
So we, we do have an inspector.
Right.
And, uh, so all the permits are, are inspected, um, throughout the process, and in some cases, multiple inspections depending on what.
We could address it.
Yeah. We probably should, this is probably not the time for.
A discussion on it.
Discussion on it. But I, I will provide an answer.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, next your announcements. So, uh, Mardi Gras Golf Course Parade is this Saturday at three P M. Tina has some great things planned and, uh, good king cake for all. So even if you're not officially in the parade, um, please join us, uh, at the park, at the conclusion of the parade, kicking it off, and, uh, enjoy some king cake for all. So, uh, and then also, there is an opening on the board of adjustments. Uh, applications are due February fifteenth. Yes, Robert?
One opening, three alternates, two alternates.
Oh, an opening for two alternates?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so I guess, yeah, there's one full position, uh, available that we need to fill and then two more. So also, if you don't want to apply, but you know someone that would make a great person on that board, and I can twist their arm, uh, let me, let me know if there's anybody you recommend, and I'll be happy to go twist arms. Uh, and the final deadline for alderman candidates is February sixteenth. So a reminder, we have three positions that are, um, expiring in May at the election, of Alderman Welch's position, Alderman Rupertus's position, and Alderman Green's position. So those three seats are up for election, and the packets are here and available. Um, and then we'll keep you posted after the closing deadline next. And see how, we'll be open, both, uh, Robert and Tina, who's in no reading, will be here Friday till five o'clock to accept your application. So, um, we will be open late. Okay, next your reports from directors. So, um, Kendall, do you have any?
Yes, I am. Just a quick update on the water project, so, um, all the, all the main lines are installed, the bacteria and pressure testing, uh, was successfully completed. So they're now installing taps, um, which has been completed so far on Manavil Way and then yesterday on Bermuda Way. So, um, we're, we're well within the project deadline of the, of the sixty days, which is sometime the first week of March. So things are going, uh, quite well in that regard. I'll make you aware, um, we issued a hundred and thirty-eight citations to forty ter- forty-two short-term rental properties. And so, um, in an effort to crack down on, on issues, um, we are, uh, we have started issuing citations. So those went out last week. Spring heavy trash cleanup, um, is scheduled for Saturday, April sixth, and, uh, we will start publicizing that a little bit better. But just for edification, things that will not be picked up, household trash, hazardous waste, which would include freon if you had a refrigerator or something, you, if you remove the freon, you can, you can put out the refrigerator. Also paints, um, electronics are not being picked up. Large construction jobs and large tree trunks, they will not be picking up. So, um, of course, you already mentioned, uh, the elections for the three alderman positions. And, um, we cut, uh, beach nourishment, just a, an update on that project, and, and I think probably Robert may have it on his report as well, but, uh, um, we will, we will, we will be looking to go out for bid for that project sometime in the July to September timeframe, but we're, we're, uh, we're waiting on some final engineer plans, so. Um, unless you, unless you have questions.
No, I mean, just so everybody knows, the beach nourishment project, uh, we're hauling sand in to extend our beach. So, um, it's been on the books and working for a long time, and.
Thirteen years.
Yeah, thirteen years. So, uh, we're, we're in the final stages of that. So probably won't take place till next winter.
Probably.
But it, it's finally gonna have a deeper reach. All right, next, um, Chief, anything to add to your report?
No ma'am.
It's in the agenda packet?
No ma'am, everything's in there. I've kinda tried to break it down this go around.
Thank you for adding that.
Yep, some of the citizen's folks, so we're meeting halfway there, we're getting it there, and we're still working with what we can do. So anyway, it's in there, and don't forget about the, um, Mardi Gras event, uh, on Saturday. Even if it's raining, we're still gonna roll with it.
Bring your umbrellas.
Yes ma'am.
All right, next, uh, Mr. Kito, do you have?
Kendall.
Covered most of it?
Yes, he did.
Okay.
Uh, we did, I did meet with the park board there, and they do wanna do some inter, uh, local agreements with some things with the beach, which we need to explore.
Okay.
So we'll bring that to you within the next, next meeting.
Okay, would you like, so to elaborate that with council a little bit, uh, Robert and Kendall have been talking to, uh, the park board in Galveston. So we're looking at ways to leverage the things they do for Galveston beach sarcasm removal, keeping the beaches open, uh, possibly trash pickup, or they know, they don't do a lot of that.
They'll, they'll make the contract also, so.
Yeah, so anyway, but looking at ways that we can utilize the equip, the heavy equipment they have and, um, have better service and cleaner.
I'll just give you a tidbit on what we're doing, what we talked about today is, if they give us, we allow them to have a staging place like where, where Branch is, they will clean up our, our drive-through, so it's gonna be a trade-off, so it's still in the works.
Okay, perfect.
What's that? What are they gonna do, use that as a staging area?
Staging area, correct.
For?
Just, uh, a skister.
Are they gonna have a fence that they have now, or is it?
Well, actually, that belongs to Branch, but.
Or they just gonna put it there?
They, well, that's still, was still very early. Very early.
Yeah, that might not be the optimum location for it either way.
Well, I've seen you, so I'm just asking.
Yeah, it's still very early, they didn't even ask if they could park it right here in front, on the side, and it's still very early.
Yeah. Uh, no, that would be, that would be terrific. All right, Chief, Chief B.
All right, I would have been here last month, but we didn't get a chance to, uh, close out our report because we were waiting on another agency's information. So I'll start off page five, because most, most of the first few pages are just unusual stuff. We responded to two hundred and thirty-four calls for service in two thousand and twenty-three. Forty-eight of those were mutual aid or automatic aid given to assist the Galveston. Twenty-five of those were fires, a hundred and twenty-eight calls were a rescue or emergency medical services call. Twenty-five calls were for high-risk condition with no fire, this would be a line down, arcades parking, gas leak, things of that nature. Twenty-eight calls were driven in camp or false alarm calls, meaning someone called in and said there was a fire, and then we got there, there was no fire, or one alarm was going off, uh, but there was no fire. And then twenty-eight calls were service calls, service calls would fall into the other category, they can be lift assists, they can be, uh, someone has a lockout or something like that, and the assistance. Just as a comparison for two thousand and twenty-two, we responded to two hundred and seventy-two calls. Fifty-eight of those were mutual aid, um, twenty-four were fires, one was, uh, actually an overpressure rupture explosion with no fire. A hundred and sixty-seven calls were EMS calls, twenty-six calls were hazardous condition, twenty-one calls good intent, and twenty-two calls were service calls. Uh, we did respond to three structure fires in Jamaica Beach during the year. Two of those were unfortunately fatality fires. We responded to six structure fires in Galveston, as part of our automatic aid agreement with them. For us to respond to a Galveston fire, it has to be on the west end or it's gone beyond the second alarm impact, so. That would denote where we need to wait then. We also responded to four brush fires, one motor vehicle fire at the San Luis Pass, two recreational vehicle fires, and performed four standby assignments where we covered the west end while they were fighting a two-alarm fire. We also responded to two motor vehicle accidents at San Luis Pass. Galveston needed us to provide four-by-four access to get to the patients. We responded to eleven water rescue calls during the year as part of our, uh, Galveston Marine Response. We also responded to three EMS calls at mutual aid to Galveston because they were tied up on other calls, uh, so they, they asked us to head those calls. And then, uh, we responded to three motor vehicle accidents, uh, because they were classified as mass casualties, so we need additional resources. We had one member complete firefighter certification during two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, we have four additional members that have joined the department, and one of our members was hired by the Galveston Fire Department, and we're very proud of her accomplishment. And she is, in another two months, will be done with her work for the year, and will be on her way. Our website hosting company did go out of business last year, uh, quite suddenly and without notice. We were able to get a temporary landing page up within about a month, but as of early January, we're finally back up and running the whole website, so it's up and available at the same address as it was before, so the link on the page should still work. Now you'll actually see the website.
And you expect donations on that website too, right?
Well, that's why we got the landing page up, the donation page, but it's now on the corporate new website. For incidents, our volunteers contributed six hundred and eighty-six point five hours this year at the helm. And for training, five hundred and sixty-seven point five hours, for a total of twelve hundred and fifty-four hours of volunteer time contributed. That doesn't include time doing mailouts, time doing fundraiser, or chili cook-offs we worked on or anything like that. Those are all non-trackable work that our volunteers do. Then on page eleven, uh, just a couple of, of interesting statistics to bring forward. For those three structure fires, um, the assessed value of losses was one point seven million dollars. Which is about, about average for what I'd, what I'd say around here. We had nine overlapping calls, that means nine, nine calls where we were on a call and receiving another call. So those are, those are definitely picked up this year than the last year. And I, our average response times are very, very good. I, I will say, um, the dispatch to arrival is skewed because we're in mutual aid, we typically have the travel farther, so that tends to skew our average. But as you see, our average turnout time dispatching route is under ten minutes, which is, you know, a little bit different in our size. Go ahead, you have any questions?
I'd like to, uh, remind that on April thirteenth.
Yes.
Right, Kyle? Uh, J V I C is sponsoring the fire safety training awareness class, fire safety awareness class, and, uh, and Kyle is coordinating that and leading that effort. So I think that's at the park at nine thirty.
I'll be there, yes.
On April thirteenth, we'll be posting more about it, and I know J V C, J V I C has it in their mailouts as well. So, um, we appreciate you taking that on and leading that effort. Okay, next is consent, agenda, and approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve minutes as posted?
Motion to approve minutes as posted for regular council meeting on one twenty-five, twenty twenty-four, and special council meeting on one twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, do I have a second?
I have a second back there.
Okay, all approval of the minutes is, is posted?
Aye.
All right, unanimous, thank you. Okay, moving on to, we have no old business. Oh, sorry, uh, always wanna jump over that one. The, uh, comments, reports, wait.
This quarter version?
Do we need to strike the, online, it still shows number three, but it doesn't, not the official posted one. I think we printed the.
Oh, did?
I think this printed the wrong version.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, this was the official.
That wasn't the official posted version. So we are, we are correct in approving one and two. Your printed version three.
I've got my copy off the website.
Yes, and three's not there, though we're okay. All right, next your comments, reports for members of council. Alderman Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I did some little research this year, I, or, you know, can, can, uh, pass a little bit. I, I always look forward to seeing what the census looks like for our city. And because we're such a little city, it takes a long time because they take care of the bigger cities first. And I haven't looked for six or nine months, and bam, I saw it there, it was like, oh! So, and I always save the stuff from two thousand, and I save the stuff from the two thousand and ten. So I just thought I'd do a quick run over and some of the things that are interesting to me, maybe they'll be interesting to you. Um, the two thousand and twenty U S Census reports, the population of Jamaica Beach is one thousand seventy-eight, six hundred and thirty-four households and living arrangements, one thousand four hundred and ten housing units, fifty-seven point four have a bachelor degree or higher. The median age is fifty-six point seven. Twenty-six point eight percent are over the age of sixty-five. Five percent are over the age of seventy-five. Thirty-eight, thirty-seven people, or eight point eight percent, live below the poverty line. Ninety-six point two percent are U S citizens. Nine point five percent were born in a foreign country. Four point nine percent served in the military, the majority of those served in Vietnam. Sixty-six point nine percent drive alone to work. Twenty-nine point two percent work from home. Three point nine percent carpool. Fifty-seven point one percent are employed. And, um, something that's not from the census that I do wanna, I did wanna bring up, and this is from an old open record, uh, request that I got to two thousand and twenty-one, but since two, since nineteen ninety-seven up until two thousand and twenty-one, we have three, two hundred and ninety-nine total new house construction building permits. So our numbers have basically stayed, um, as household, and with the, the population, they've stayed the same, but we gained almost three hundred new homes. Ginger wanted me to bring up that, uh, February twentieth is, on Tuesday, February twentieth, early voting starts, uh, for the primary, uh, elections at Seaside Church. And I know that he's not here, but, um, Chief Garrity, uh, we really need to thank him with the boot, there you are, with the boots and bling thing. Karen said that it was the biggest fundraiser to date for their organization. Chief, you and your wife have become a great asset towards City and, and Chels. Thank you very much, and thank you, Mayor.
I don't have anything to report.
Okay.
First, I'd like to thank some of you here who were here Saturday. That takes a lot to take time out of your weekend and show up and participate, and I truly appreciate it. It's great to get open and honest discussion. I don't know what's gonna come of it, but it was better than just stewing and yelling back and forth in this room. At least that's my gut feeling on it. Mayor, I would like us to, uh, have progress or a progress report on the state of our audited financial statements with storm season coming up, please, and I would like to know where we are. Because if we do need to apply for a aid, um, our financials have to be in tip-top shape, so. That's all I have for this.
All right, Alderman Green?
I don't have anything for this, ma'am.
All right. Okay, on to new business. First is discussion consideration and take action to approve city procurement policy. Was brought up, Kendall, you wanna lead us in this?
Certainly, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so, um, this was a, a follow-up to our discussion at the last meeting regarding the citywide procurement policy. After discussion last time, I, I did tweet or added language regarding pro- the procurement, the process that we use for requisitions, uh, for purchases, um, in response to Alderman Madre's concerns. Uh, and that has been added on page four underneath the purchasing authority table. And, uh, I have, I had sent a copy to the, uh, to the council in preface of tonight, um, and I did not hear any other concerns. Unless, unless there are some additional concerns, you know, I would, uh, I would recommend, uh, adoption of the procurement policy.
Any discussion comments from council?
Do I have a motion to, uh, approve the city procurement policy? Mayor, I'll make that, um, motion to approve the city procurement policy.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right, all in favor of approving the city procurement policy as posted in the agenda?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Okay, next is discussion consideration and take action to approve code of ethics and conduct for elected and appointed officials. Once again. Once again, Kendall, can you lead us?
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor. Again, similar to the procurement policy, this is something that was brought forward at the last meeting for discussion. I, I thought that, I got the general consensus that everyone was good with as it was written. I did add a section, just, the one, the thing that was brought up was a discussion about social media policy, so that policy was added. In the, towards the end, and I apologize, I didn't mark where that was in my, on here, right here, on page fourteen. Also, Alderman Jones asked that I would add a clarification in many of the places it talks about. It uses city boards and commissions, she wanted to know if I could add a clarification or add the word committee to that as well. And, and so in all places that, where it stated boards and commissions, I add, it now says boards, committees, and commissions in response to her clarification. I did not, I did not get any negative feedback to the addition of the social media policy. And so, again, I would recommend approval of the policy.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the code of ethics and conduct for elected and appointed officials?
Mayor, I'll make that motion to approve the code of ethics.
I think we had some discussion first.
Yeah, I would like to, I, I have some questions. I'm way behind on my homework. And I haven't, I haven't read through, and the question I would have is, is are there any consequences for non-compliance for employees and council members?
There is a, there is.
Yeah, it's in here.
It is in here. And the sanctions, now, I will, I will tell you that it, the sanctions for city council and elected officials and appointed officials starts at your level. The state of Texas does provide for some, for some consequences, and quite honestly, most, most states don't. And outside of recall, which is a, which is a hard thing to achieve. And, but there is a section that, that does spell out what the consequences are for infractions of, of the policy as allowed by the state of Texas.
Excellent. Any other, any other discussion? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the code of ethics and conduct for elected and appointed officials as posted in the agenda?
Mayor, I'll make that motion to approve the code of ethics and conduct for elected and appointed officials.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? All right, all approved, thank you. All right, next is discussion consideration and take action to approve contract for swimming pool deck resurfacing. Robert, Kendall, which of you are going to discuss?
We sent it out to bid, and we, it was inspected. The surface around the pool has never been resurfaced, it's been, it's the original. We sent it out to bid, we received four bids, this, most, it came in twenty-eight thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars. This is also a hot tax item because of the terrorism recommendation from the cities that, from the staff, is that you accept this bid?
And I don't, I don't know if you remember, but we did, we did put quite a bit of money for pool maintenance in the budget this year. This was one of the items. The other item, I'm not sure it's going to trigger council approval, but we are looking at purchasing some additional filter pumps. Ours are way past, they're, they're significantly past their life. They've not failed yet, but we're trying to procure them for better pricing upfront. So this was, this was a budgeted line item. Any, any discussion? Comments, questions? Nope, okay. Do I have a motion to approve the contract for the swimming pool deck resurfacing?
Motion to approve contract for swimming pool deck resurfacing?
Okay, do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right, all in favor of approving the contract for swimming pool deck resurfacing?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're spending a lot of money tonight. Discussion consideration and take action to approve contract for upgrade to city hall's elevator. Mr. Francis, do you want to?
Certainly, I can, I can.
Tell us the state?
So the, if, if you've ever used our elevator, you'll know that it's, it's very antiquated. Over the course of the last few months, especially since I've been here, we've had to make multiple repairs to the elevator. It seems like it quits working about every two weeks. In fact, they were just here two days ago to, to make some temporary repairs. But, so this is an item that has been in previous budgets. There has been money allocated in the, in the previous budgets. Unfortunately, the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, that, that money was removed. But we do have money set aside in the hot tax, that this, that this can be a hot tax item because it serves as the ADA accessibility to the stadium. And so I am, I am proposing, I am proposing that, that we use the available money that is budgeted for hot tax. We have seventy thousand dollars available in, in the budget, and the cost is recommended. We put this out on tips, and we received three bids. Allied Elevator is a low, a low bidder at sixty-eight thousand eight hundred. And unless you have questions, I would recommend approving the bid from Allied Elevator.
Are they the ones that installed it?
I don't know if they're the ones that installed it, but they have been the ones that have been coming regularly to keep it, make it, keep it running.
Keep it living.
They do, they do our annual inspections as well. Ironically, it passes annual, it has passed the annual inspection, which just occurred last month. But like I said, the, the whole elevator itself and, and the parts are antiquated, and it's time for an upgrade. Now, the cost of a completely new elevator would be probably a little financially unfeasible, but we're going to end up with essentially a new elevator by the time they're done with, replacing it.
Yeah, my understanding is the controller on it, they can't even get anymore. So, and they have to, the, the feet that it fit on to balance and, and run all the safety systems, those are antiquated and don't talk correctly to the controller, so that's why it's always shutting down. Because it says, I'm not balanced, I'm not anchored, I can't open the door. It won't, it won't talk to it.
So we will now have up-to-date safety features, that is one of the things that, you know, could really ease it is to come back into compliance with the most, most up-to-date safety standards and safety features. So, and in your pocket, there, there is a breakdown, line by line, of what their, of the scope of work will include. Now, the, there will be a substantial window where it will be down as repairs take place, possibly three weeks or so. So we're, we've already begun trying to figure out when that best timeframe for that can, can be. So, but I do recommend that we approve this bid and get moving forward with, try to get this scheduled.
And also for that repair window, we will post ways for citizens who cannot manage up and down the stairs, for our staff to be able to go down and meet them and take care of city business.
Yes.
And, and then we're also looking at potentially canceling the council meeting on March fourteenth to allow the elevator to be down. So, those are. So, anyway, Kendall will work on the optimum, and we will keep alternate ways of doing city business while it is down. All right, any discussion on this item? No. Okay, and I should further add, there was money in the budget for a new elevator, if you track it back, it's been there for the last three or four budgets.
At least two years.
Yeah, and when I looked back, it's been there for a while. And I did take it out of the budget this year with the hope that we could live one more year, but soon as I took it out of the budget, the elevator has reminded us every other week that I shouldn't have taken it out of the budget. So, anyway, do I have a motion to approve contract for upgrades to the city hall's elevator?
I'll make that motion that we consider and take act, and we approve the contract for upgrading the city hall's elevator. It's a very detailed scope of work, and it's a very good scope of work. I'm comfortable with it.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of approving the contract for upgrades to city hall's elevator? All right, unanimous, thank you. Okay, next is discussion consideration and take action to approve contract to upgrade lift station number six. Mr. Francis, would you fill us in?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So we, it's recent inspections of the city lift stations as we were trying to do some capital improvement planning. During those inspections, we realized that lift station number six, as it's reported here, is nearing critical failure and, and needs immediate repairs. Only one pump is working. As we were, as we were operating the pump, it does appear that maybe there's holes in the bottom of it, the way the water was floating or flowing in there. Discharge piping is full of holes. Branch Construction has made some temporary repairs to it with water clamps that, that was, they've made the, they made the repairs unbeknownst to us just because they realized it needed it, and, and now the repairs are failing. So it needs a, it needs a substantial overhaul. And so we, Branch has provided a quote for all of the station maintenance, but the one that needs immediate detention is number six. I've reviewed, I've reviewed the proposal. We do have money set aside in two different line items for lift station sewer plant maintenance. So we have a total of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars set aside in this year's budget, and I recommend approving this, a quote from Branch Construction, the amount of forty-nine thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars to overhaul, upgrade lift station number six.
The other thing we should point out is this is not a full rebuild, like the Bayside Lift Station was. The Bayside Lift Station had been spewing acid on the walls of the lift station for a long time, and so the whole, the whole sump was degraded and needed to be lined, and, and, I mean, that one was just a total overhaul. This is still a major rebuild.
Yes.
But it's not a complete overhaul like Bayside.
Yeah, we, we did not see any degradation of the walls or any infiltration through any of the seams, so it will not be lined.
Right.
But however, isolation valves, check valves, of course, we're going to vacuum and clean it, but both pumps will be replaced. Like I said, only one is operational, and the other one has been pulled for a, a long amount of time, waiting on a decision from us for how to move forward. So also, and you see the inclusion of safety netting, which is required, that unfortunately none of our lift stations have. So you will see that, and all the, all the upgrades will be upgraded in that as well. But this is, this is an immediate need.
Yeah.
The others are, are, have needs, but this one has to happen immediately.
Yeah, the others are tired, not dying. This one is gasping. Yeah, so we did put budget money in for lift station. You know, at budget time, we recognized that all the lift stations were in bad shap, not all of them are in bad shape, but four out of seven of them are. And so this is the first of, of many projects around our lift stations, just with, you know, Branch's capacity and staff's capacity to, to manage and analyze. So any other discussion, questions? Nope. Do I have a motion to approve contract to upgrade lift station number six?
Motion to approve contract to upgrade lift station number six.
Do I have a second? I'm second there. All right, all in favor of approving the contract to upgrade lift station number six?
Yes.
Okay, it's unanimous. All right, next on the agenda is discussion consideration and take action to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh-two, authorizing the transfer of American Rescue Plan Act funds to high-yield money markets. Kendall, Mr. Francis, would you like to give us an overview of this?
Certainly. So part of the, the American Rescue Plan, each city in the country was provided with, with funds. The city of Jamaica Beach received two hundred and thousand five hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-eight cents, which has, which is currently sitting in a money market drawing about one point five percent interest. However, the city does have municipal money market high-yield fund, and, which is paying out of four point eight five percent interest for deposits in excess of two hundred thousand. So obviously, these funds qualify for that. I'm recommending that we transfer the entirety of, of those original funds and any interest that it earned into the high-yield account. And as, as the staff report says, it still does provide immediate access to those funds. It doesn't tie them up for any long periods of time, because as we start looking at other infrastructure repairs, further repairs of the additional lift stations, things like that, it would be my recommendation that the, the ARPA funds would be one of the first sources of funds that we utilize to make those repairs. But we need to be, we need to be maximizing our return on it while, while, while we're not using it.
Any, any, so, yeah, basically, when Kendall came on board, I had heard that these funds were now available for different citywide general expenses. So Mr. Francis immediately dug into it, looked into it, he had experience from his previous position and knew that we could use these funds for anything else. So they will still be earmarked within this money market account, because we do have to track and be able to show what we spend them on.
That was my question, will this be held separate from the other lines?
Well, it'll be earmarked as such in our QuickBooks accounting. It'll show that, that in this money market fund, this is that account. And then we will develop a bunch of line items specifically and just be able to show that this two hundred thousand five hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-eight cents plus interest, and actually, we don't have to, interest can go into anything else, but that that money will go towards government-approved expenditures of this, and our infrastructure needs qualify. So anything.
No question about the qualification. Concern is what we could, we didn't want to get into a situation where we haven't.
Tracked it.
Specifically held it separate, okay? And tracked it, that's all.
Yeah, and, and we are doing that. So.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any, any other discussion? Nope, okay. Do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh-two, authorizing the transfer of American Rescue Plan Act funds to high-yield money markets?
Mayor, I'll make that motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four zero-two, authorizing the transfer of American Rescue Plan Act funds to high-yield money market.
Okay, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, all in favor of approving, moving money market, money around? Okay, all approved. All right, next is discussion consideration and take action to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh-three, establish authorization for signature of city of Jamaica Beach, Texas checks. Mr. Francis, do you want to?
Sure.
Swell the bases of this one?
And so we, we were visiting with Texas First Bank about getting me signed up as a signatory for our city checking account, and then we realized that we really needed to establish a, a better process for who would be signatories within the city, just for your edification. Each check that we sign requires two signatures, and they have to be actual signature stamps do not qualify for that. And currently, it's in the mayor. Um, and currently, it's, um, the mayor, the city secretary, and a couple of council members are authorized signatories. Um, but, uh, um, the process I put together would, that it would be by position and not by person, so the mayor, city council, all city council members, uh, city administrator, city secretary, and finance director would be authorized signatories. Um, just one caveat, the finance director, and this will be spelled out in future, um, financial policies, will not be able to sign a check except that when a, uh, a state of emergency has been declared just because of the, uh, um, we don't want someone who's writing the check to be able to sign that check as well. So, um, and so, but, uh, this, this allows us to have multiple options of, of, if we need checks signed, and, uh, we, we believe that doing it by position makes it, um, regardless of who's filling those positions. And so, uh, um, the resolution, if you approve that, Matt will set these up and will also require, um, each of the people to fill out, um, a form that, that I will have for them. Um, informational form, and you will also have to provide a copy of your driver's license, just, just for full clarification. Um, but, uh, I believe this could be the, the best procedure for us to move forward.
Uh, the other thing too to note, uh, because all council members will now be, uh, have signatory authority, um, the, the other thing about that is any time we make a change to who can sign or, uh, yeah, add and subtract people, it requires signatures from all authorized signers. So, um, you know, you, you might think, "Oh, I'll never have to sign." Well, you might have to sign to allow other people to sign, so, um, it's, uh...
Especially as we have, if we have turnover on the council and things like that, and people come on.
It's not that hard, she doesn't, she doesn't, you know, you can do it online.
Yeah, Sydney's good.
Doc you sign.
Yeah, Sydney's good.
It's not hard to do it all.
Okay, do I have any other discussion? Nope, okay. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two forty-oh-three, establishing authorization for signature of City of Jamaica Beach, Texas checks?
I'll make that motion, and then we take action to approve Res- Resolution twenty-two forty-oh-three, establishing authorization for signature of City of Jamaica Beach, Texas checks.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor of approving Resolution, Resolution twenty-two forty-oh-three?
Unanimous.
Okay, unanimous. All right, thank you. All right, um, to my report. Um, first, I'd like to once again thank our wonderful staff who work so hard on behalf of the citizens and make city hall a caring, inviting place to be. So, um, really, thank you all in a camp. Um, every day I look at Mr. Francis and say, "Have I told you today how glad I am you're here?" So, uh, he's making a huge difference, and I think through our new business, you can see how rapidly he's taking the city to a new spot. Um, I'd like to remind that, uh, code officer, uh, Reggie Randall, Reginald Randall, uh, he will be starting on the nineteenth, is that correct? Kendall, okay.
We're open on the nineteenth?
Yeah, we're open. Um, anyway, he'll be, he'll be starting in about two weeks.
Yeah, it'll be rough, I, I honestly can't confirm the nineteenth, but it will be...
It, it's, it's, um, he was on another job he was finishing up. So, um, he indicated he's going to try to be here that week, assuming his other job all wrapped up. Um, so we will introduce him at council so everybody can say hi and get to see his face. Um, also, on the audit, and we will have a more official update. Um, we are behind schedule. Uh, trying to dig back through old data has been much more challenging than we expected. Um, the auditors do have all the information now for the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty audit. Uh, we have started prepping the twenty-twenty, twenty-one information. And also, as we've gone back and dug up some of the nineteen-twenty, we've also found things that will help support the twenty-twenty-one. So, um, we will get with the auditors and can't promise it next meeting, but, um, we will send out an updated schedule based on what they tell us. If we have stuff to them by this date, then they'll have stuff to us by this date. So, um, it is progressing, but it, you, it has been very challenging to dig up all the information and the back and forth. So, um, okay, so that's the audit, and then, um, reminder, we are having a Memorial Day event at the park. It's on Saturday, May twenty-fifth. I'd like to do a special thanks to Ashley Hay, Ashley Hayes. She won't be able to attend the event, but she helped with last year's, and she's helping organize this year's event as well. Marcy Hoffman is helping, and Frank and Jessica Sartre are also helping. Um, the event coordinators will keep you posted on their plans, but put it on your calendars. Um, the town hall event held on January twenty-seventh to discuss short-term rentals, it was very well attended. I apologize for the length of the meeting, but it was great to come together and great for council to hear citizen input. Uh, we, uh, on an immediate basis, um, we have three takeaways, um, that we're acting on. The first, communication was a recurring theme at the town hall. So I don't know if you noticed, but we've started putting summaries of council meeting agendas on Facebook and the website. So if you want to know what's going to be upcoming on, uh, the council meeting, you can go out and just see high-level bullets about new business. And it'll just be the new business items, and then for more information, you can go to the website and from the Facebook or from the news alert, there will be links to the agenda items. So you can download the full copy and read in detail either proposed ordinances, proposed policies, um, contracts we're looking at considering. So, um, there was an issue that, that maybe people didn't know what was happening on council and what was going to be addressed at council. And, uh, so we've tried to simplify folks learning what's on council. So you don't have to go download the whole agenda packet, um, figure out and, and back and forth. You can just look at it high level and go. Uh, so thanks to staff for willing, for, for taking that, that little extra step to help communicate. Um, the other thing was, um, that we kept hearing over and over was enforcement. So, uh, a lot of issue about how we have zero tolerance and enforce what we have. So along that front, um, we are taking aggressive steps to ensure that all short-term rentals are registered and that everyone is paying the correct hotel occupancy tax. Um, Mr. Francis already alluded to the fact that citations did go out this week, that those went out to people that are not registered and have not been registered. Uh, we do appreciate all the short-term rental owners and operators that are working diligently to comply. Uh, we're still working through some of the issues with the, with the various platforms on how our short-term rental owners need to set up their listings to ensure compliance. We've hit a few hiccups there, and, uh, and we are working through that and finding solutions for that. Uh, so that, that's pertaining to the new ordinance that was passed on October twenty-sixth. Um, uh, also, on another note, I mentioned this previously, that we are sending a list of short-term rental properties that are claiming a homestead exemption. Um, that list will be going to the appraisal district, and, uh, they can't go back three years to collect property taxes that were not properly assessed. So, um, that list is going out. Around noise, um, we will be reviewing the existing noise ordinance to evaluate its effectiveness, and we might be bringing proposed changes forward to council. So looking at ways to strengthen our noise ordinance. Um, I know, uh, Chief's already been discussing it, and we're looking at, at what we can do. But, um, you know, also understand that, you know, it, our, our chief does understand that the community wants active policing with respect to noise. Um, also then, to support enforcement, we will be requesting approval to add additional patrols on the weekends during busy season. When we looked at the solutions proposed, um, there was a lot of energy around having extra police force at our busiest times. So, uh, Chief is going to be working on, on how best to staff that, and, um, we do think we can use some hotel motel tax to do that. We're investigating that a little more thoroughly. But, um, that was another takeaway from the meeting that, that we will be immediately responding to. Uh, we just have to kind of define what busy season is. I mean, we know it's June and July, um, it's just how far back are we going to move it up until April and May? Um, so, um, that's, that's one of the immediate things on, um, enforcement being stressed. Uh, the third item that was talked a lot about was parking. So, um, that was a recurring concern. So at the next council meeting, parking will be on the agenda for discussion. Um, still have to work out the details, not anticipating that it's going to be an actual ordinance yet. It will just be for discussion. So kind of a brainstorm on what would be the best solution for limiting parking on the streets in our community. So if all of you can go out and think about that, visit with your neighbors, uh, we will, we will be having a discussion on that at the next council meeting. And, um, anyway, uh, I'd like to, to thank all the citizens that came and voiced their concerns and suggested improvements. We will bring, be bringing more of those suggestions forward, uh, for further discussion at upcoming council meetings. And then also a little update on, uh, trash. Just a reminder, four containers is what's allowed. That can be two black trash bags, two, two trash cans. But remember, your black trash cans have to be varmit, not, yeah, your black trash bags have to be varmit resistant. So, uh, you know, if you have chicken bones in anything, a coyote is going to think it's lunch. Um, so be careful what you put in those black trash bags and maybe consider buying more trash cans. Sixty-four gallons is the maximum. I know there's folks out there that have ninety-gallon containers. So we, we will start sending notice around that our trash guys can't pick those up, and they can't be more than fifty pounds. So please a reminder about that. All right, so I hope to see you all Saturday at the parade, enjoy King Cake. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? All right, all in favor of adjourning? All right, thank you all.